I'll call the meeting to order. Will you please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Thank you. We actually started, I don't know, maybe name members, uh, doing the pledge of the flag at the beginning of the meetings when, uh, when nine eleven, right after that, uh.
They weren't here yet. You were still doing them when I got in.
It just seems like we've been here forever, but we haven't.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda is approve the minutes from August tenth, August twenty fourth and September seventh. But they were good. I didn't see that.
I made the motion, we approved August tenth, August twenty fourth and September seventh meeting of minutes as written.
So there's our motion by Chris, second by Mark to approve the minutes of August tenth, August forty fourth and September seventh as written. All those in favor? Thank you. Who could be doing?
We don't know yet. We're gonna, we're, we're meeting with somebody next Tuesday. But we did get some applications.
So now just look at the.
Potentially, yeah, we'll, we'll have that conversation whether they're willing to come in or, or, or when they want to do it by Zoom.
Uh, next are department reports and.
Good evening. Two meetings in a row, I make it. Um, just wanna thank those that came out for the nine eleven ceremony. I went very well. I was absent, but I was glad to see that my crew stepped up and was able to pull off a nice preview. For that event, so anybody that attended, thank you. Uh, fire department continued to be busy, several calls again in the past couple of weeks. Most notable one was, uh, the one we had intersection two oh two Blue Road where two vehicles collided. Fortunately, no serious injury, but, um, vehicle came detached from the flatbed and rolled off the flatbed. Narrowly missed Sergeant Westman's cruiser. And, uh, it's my truck by about six inches, uh, but unfortunately rolled into the, uh, the front wall of the Patriot fireworks store. About their alarm system and, uh. Yeah, thank you. But, uh, again, it was, it was close because I got yelled at and I had to jump out of the way of the vehicle being flying towards me. Anyway, uh, just a unique call. Apple Fest, uh, I'm sure Chief Ferland will talk about it some more, but, uh, Fire Department will be out there in the morning, help cheer on the runners with an engine. Usually help out with traffic control. So if you need us, let us know. Usually congregate that morning about seven thirty. We'll, we'll have a few volunteers. We helped the museum set up. Uh, the fire department is also gonna be off at the homecoming games that evening, Saturday night. Light up the, the hill and the parking lot with our engine eighty three. Do that every year. Just to make it more illuminated for the crowds that are gonna be there. They bring in some auxiliary lights for the field soccer players, but they appreciate us coming out and lighting up the hill and parking lot. Makes it safer for people to walk around. This Sunday is gonna be our annual hose testing. So busy weekend for us. We'll be at the basement store. Several hours, ten thousand feet of hose. Spare hose, plus everything that's on our apparatus. October eighth, uh, we're gonna have a fall harvest sale. That's gonna be up at the Hymor Farm. We've done that the last two years. Been pretty successful. That's to benefit our Richard P Milligan Scholarship Fund. Uh, so if you need pumpkins or baked goodies, come out and see us. Usually the access is right off the. That's the road. Um, and all the time, I'd say it's between ten and one, something like that, nine and one. October eleventh, uh, is Tuesday. That's our fire prevention week. We do this every year. We'll be at the uh, station this year. So we can actually have the kids, uh, pre-K through second grade. Uh, all those classes will come at different times throughout the day. Both the kids will actually walk down to the school. And her kid will be bussed over. Be doing some fire safety messages. We'll have our fire, uh, smoke trailer available to go through the new one. Looking forward to that. And then Saturday, October fifteenth will be our breakfast with Sparky, our open house at a station between seven and ten. So, yeah. Beyond the pandemic, hopefully. So come enjoy breakfast with us. We'll have a coloring contest for the kids, bring their pictures and Sparky. Uh, later in the month, we'll be giving rides to schools. Uh, last thing I have is the furnace at the North Station got replaced, so that cooperation with that with the safe heat system up there. So our bill is the contractor that installed that for us. We had gone up to bid last year and he came in a couple thousand hundred. Other bid we had to see, so. So I got, I was ready to ask you questions.
Thank you. I didn't understand that accident here of the corner of Blue and two oh two.
Yes.
The thing with your, the, with the, uh, flatbed was during the accident or after the accident?
It was after the crash. The flatbed was on scene, loading the vehicle up with the cable. The cable detached from the front bumper and the vehicle went rolling because it was in neutral. And it had a little momentum because it was elevated and went shooting across the intersection, missing a couple of vehicles and going downhill right into the front wall of the fireworks. It'll be, it'll be in my weekly memo on Sundays.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Dan.
Do you care if I sit here or left turn? Okay. I just have two things to, uh, bring up briefly and, uh, both involve the transfer station. Uh, the first one is I received a call, uh, very late today around four o'clock, Zach, who's like, I'm not sure if you doesn't. Uh, from a resident, uh, Jerry calls. And, uh, long story short, her husband has a lumber making mill now, wood mill. He's creating a lot of scrap wood, uh, in small wood stove burnable size. And her question to me was, is, is there a way that she could get that wood to people in, in need or, um, that are heating assistance, et cetera, uh, without having to just take it to the transfer station and have it be, be dumped and, and of course not pickable at that point? So I talked to her about the size of the load she had and it's roughly a small dump truck load of like our one ton dump truck load of wood. Um, so I told her that I, I was in favor of trying to uh, arrange something to, um, get that wood available to the public that could want it, uh, first come, first served. So uh, in thinking about it, just a short couple hours, I think I just put it under the umbrella of the free tent that we've had at the transfer station in the past. But that is not in service at the moment. Um, so would just letting the board know and give me some feedback if you're in favor of this and all. It's just, I would designate a spot to put this wood separate from the large wood pile. That could be dumped with a first come, first served sign that people could actually just grab it, throw some in if they needed some firewood or, or whatever. So I, she mentioned that she had a couple neighbors that also had sawmills and small scrap wood piles. Um, the wood is clean. It's not what's considered dirty wood, so it doesn't potentially have nails and paint and varnishes and whatever else could go along with that. Um, so it would be relatively risk free to people to just pick up a handful or load into their whatever and, and, and take. So um, I was in favor of it, but I wanted to get the board's opinion before I just went ahead and did it. If they thought that would be an okay, um, gesture for us to do.
Yeah, sounds good to me. I don't know. It's been a while, but we used to have, like, when the, when the, uh, public works would cut down trees and stuff, they would, uh, bring them to down and put them somewhere down by the, uh. And it was available for people who burn wood and so, uh, so I don't know which would be.
I would rather have it at the transfer station. That way people are getting it at controlled times, which basically means during the day when the transfer station's open, the weekdays or the weekends. Rather than possibly having them come through my yard when I'm backing a grader or a dump truck around and not see them and potentially cause some issue. I'd rather keep the public works yard free from as many people that need to be there necessary. Um, so I'd rather have it at the transfer station rather than public works, but you know, I, I, I would just wanna make sure that people are gonna dump usable clean wood that there. I just, it caused me a little bit of, of administrative work, but not much. I just wanna make sure I know who's dumping and what they're dumping. Um, so that it's not a mixture that I then have to deal sorting out and causing more problems that I'm trying to, trying to make. So that's, that was, so I told the resident that I would, I would had a meeting site, I'd run it by you guys and then touch base with her on, from there. So I'm in favor of trying to make it work, um, to do something to help people out if I needed the people that that can't pick anymore. And, you know, and those, the piles, the big piles, they're dangerous. I totally understand all that, but if I could set something aside with some clean burnable firewood that helps people out, um, I'm willing to, to try and make it happen.
What, what's the status of the, uh, free tent or the free table?
Due to staffing issues this year, I didn't set it up because I really didn't have the transfer station staff available to, to even keep an eye on it. Uh, and a lot of people just take everything they have and put it there because they don't wanna either pay for it or sort it out. And so it needs to be monitored so that it's something that is actually usable. Um, and without having available staff, I, I didn't, and and I put out that if volunteers wanted to step up and, and run it, you know, some that I would work with them, but, but nobody had stepped up. So, um, it's, it's in that limbo. I, you know, I I did replace, uh, transfer staff. Remember we hired a new person, uh, but that also meant that the uh, kettle that has now come up to the public works garage full time to take his truck driver position. So I'm I'm even on staff at the transfer station at the moment. I'm not short-staffed anymore, but, uh, hopefully through the fall, winter, I might get a couple more part-time applicants that wanna maybe work weekends and then I'll have extra people. I have, uh, four people available that I could put that tent back up and, and have a, a closer eye on it to make sure that it's, you know, appropriate stuff.
And the insurance company has an issue with people picking.
People picking.
But they don't have an issue with the free tent or the, or, or if we drop off, um, usable, uh, in the wood or that's not an issue?
I haven't, I didn't have time to pose the question to the insurance company on handling firewood. Uh, and I don't know the answer exactly on the free tenant, but it's been there along. So I can only assume that it was not an issue, but I, I don't have an exact answer for sure on it.
I understand their proposals to do something in the legislature to, uh, protect, uh, the town against liability. Um, maybe that'll get enacted.
Soon. Yep. That'd be wonderful. I'd still have to keep people from climbing up the pile, but, uh.
No, you wouldn't. As long as you have a policy that says you shouldn't do that. Yeah, certainly. People are expected to have common sense.
Well, you probably.
And when they don't, they're responsible.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Yeah.
I'll do what I can to, uh, get that set up next week or two. The second, uh, transfer station thing is, um, as you know, we've gone, we're gonna go to a sticker instead of a paper permit card. Um, and I was finally able this week to have a meeting with, uh, Trudy, who's the transfer station manager, um, Lori Walker, who deals with the transfer station issues from the town courts and the counter side of things and myself to talk about the changeover and what that will mean for for who's doing what and what responsibility has come from that. Um, so in our, in our meeting, in going to stickers, as you know, on the backside of our permits right now, the paper permits, there's, there's free items. There's a couple tires, uh, ten dollars worth of demo and some free on items that people can dispose of, um, at no charge to them. We just check off the box, initial it, date it maybe, and, and they are able to dump the item without a, um, outlay of cash. Going to a sticker eliminates that paper permit and eliminates the backside of that free, the free stuff. We debated at length what that means for residents, what it means logistics wise and, and administrative wise for us to, to try and incorporate the free stuff with a now sticker or decal that'll either be on the person's car or on a cardboard piece of flexi vest, whatever they choose. The direction we came to the synopsis was that we would be eliminating the free stuff off the permit. And you would have a sticker that would allow you obviously access to the transfer station, but we wouldn't have a way to track a, a free stuff for residents. So it's a, it's it would be a, a lot of extra work. They did end up with a decal and a cardboard or paper piece of, with free stuff. It's two things. Uh, it doubles the work, it doubles the tracking. It's, you know, before it was one item, now it's two. We just feel that if, you know, we're probably for everybody's best interest, the exception of people having to pay a little extra, that it's just the decals is more than.
Why not just print a sticker with three boxes or whatever and the box can get checked off? So.
Well, that sticker is gonna be affixed to some people's windshields, side windows. Some people may not stick it on their vehicle. Uh, marking it with a marker, it could get washed off. If it's on the inside of the windshield, you're reaching into the car.
But there, I think because they went, we used to have a free dump day. We used to have a free dump day that you could take those tires, that free on appliance, and that got to be a cluster because there were people lined up in both directions trying to get in with what they had and and somebody sitting there with the loader and a town crew and all of that, and it got to be too much. So that's why we went to the card system so that there didn't have to be this one day with ten thousand, you know, needing roll offs for for demo. So we went to the, to the cards. I think that there has to be some way we can. I, I don't, I mean, I can see people not being happy about the reason we did that. Tires end up on the side of the road because people don't wanna pay for them.
I totally understand.
Refrigerators end up in somebody's, you know, driveway because it was out of the way and they didn't have to pay for it. So I think there has to be some way we figure out to do it. So.
It's like, uh, we have some ideas to, but one of the things you didn't mention though is the, is that the stickers tip, uh, we would assume would be issued on like a yearly basis so they could be colored. So those would be, you know, you'd pick them up, you know, sometime in October on, or you, or we could have the transfer station people hand them out with the beginning of the year when you drove in January or, or whatever. But the cards are handed out, have been traditionally handed out when you registered your car. So we have two separate sort of, uh, two different regimes about sort of getting those things and they're not gonna line up anymore. So you'd have, you'd have, you know, stickers would be one color and permits would be based on when you registered your car. So they'd be twelve months from some random date that the sticker on your vehicle says. So those would have to, they, they would be different colors all the time. Depending on when you registered your car, we'd have to have like a different color for almost every month so that they would know um, that that particular permit was still good.
And, you know, the, the easier side of it is unfortunately is that some people will fill out the back of their permit, fill up their, their free stuff. And then go to the town office a couple of weeks later and say, I've lost my dump permit. I get a new one. They issue a new dump permit and there's a whole new set of free items. Now, we're not talking a huge amount of money, but it, it, it was abused in the past. It, it has been and, and, you know, so that's another issue of it. So when you have a sticker decal and then a, a permit with a free thing, and if you're trying to issue both, you almost have to create a database to track it, to try and keep it straight. And like Justin mentioned, the, the stickers are gonna be good for January to December or calendar year. But are, are the permit cards gonna be as well? And how do you track? And somebody says, I need a new permit card. I didn't get one and and if you're really gonna be thorough about it, you have to have a database and track. Don Smith did. You know, they're not eligible for another one. Now that's a whole other argument. So uh, it's, that's, that's the discussion we had and, you know, that's, this is what we're leaning towards. I'm gonna come to you in two weeks on the agenda with this for a final, but I wanted to get it out there and get some thoughts and feedback to kinda to, to tweak it or take your suggestions and, and, and go with it to come up with a final solution.
Someone's coming in with free stuff in the transfer station. They normally have to present a card when they do it, right?
Yeah, their permit.
They just haven't presented their registration. You're right on there, two tires.
You could.
Next time they come in, they produce their registration because they wanna drop some free stuff.
A coat, whatever, you know, it's you, you could handwrite it on people's registration, um, if they're willing to produce their registration.
Well, that's what they're doing. That's what they're doing now is like with the card, the card is in parallel with the registration.
Correct.
So whether they're producing a card or they're producing the registration, they get them both at the same time and it's just a checklist basically.
Right.
And someone has to handwrite on the card the registration information before they send it out. So if we go with Chief Ferland's idea of just saying, hey, we're gonna make some notes on your registration, on the backside of your registration and the employee initials, the registration. Then the only thing we've lost by doing that is that we don't have a checklist. We just have a means for recording it and maybe we put up a poster at the dump. Sorry, the transfer station.
He said dump, by the way.
So, uh, so put up a poster that says, you know, here's your free stuff. Each year, we're gonna record it on your registration.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. Thank you. Good job.
My thought, either way, the, the people of the town are paying one way or the other.
That's right.
Because they drop it off and they don't pay anything to drop it off because they got it checked up on the card, but their tax dollars still have to pay to get rid of that item.
Correct.
So whether they're still paying, uh, they might feel better about it because they got it checked up on the card. But in the end, it takes more of their tax dollars to get rid of that item that they just left there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the.
There's, it's not really, the only people that benefit are people that drop a lot of stuff off. When there's no fee and.
Yeah. And as Chris mentioned, you know, Lori brought up that the whole reason the, the free dump day went away and the cards with the stuff on the back came about was to alleviate the congestion and, and massive amount of work around a free dump day. So like I say, I'm trying to, trying to walk the line to try and keep the residents happy, not, not fleece them for anything and, and and also be able to have the attendance of the transfer station, be able to manage things easily and quickly. So people get in and out. Have the town clerk as the assistants at the office who deal with residents coming in with questions, wanting permits to, to make it flow as smooth as possible, uh, but still achieve the objective that it's been put out. So.
So, so I, 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 uh, am still convinced that using a sticker tends to reduce the amount of confrontation that might happen at the transfer station.
Yeah.
And, and we're in agreement with that.
Okay.
Color coded, baseball sized sticker-ish. So it's, so people can visualize, see it from even, you know, fifty feet away, no problem. Don't have to interfere with them.
Yeah.
I agree. And yearly, you know, the color, you know, all that. So a good thing. It's just a wider web that comes from that with us, changing the system we have in place.
Yeah. And I think if, uh, we might actually save a little bit of administrative labor of having some office person fill out the backside of the, the checklist that they currently do of the old card. They fill in the registration, the expiration date and a couple of other pieces of information on the backside of card, all handwritten.
Right.
Right? If all we do now is we simply say, we make it a policy that you get X, Y, and Z in terms of free stuff. We put those three things on a poster or a sign on the dump transfer station and, uh, and just make a little footnote that says, we're gonna record this on your current registration, whatever that is. And if it's not current or you don't have it, then it's, you gotta pay for it.
Makes sense.
Or, or you can just put a warrant out that everybody's gonna pay ten dollars on a warrant, approve the warrant, and you don't have to pay a thing. Because if everybody in the town pays ten dollars, uh, back into, into tax, into the tax rate, what he's making at transfer station goes away. He probably makes more. If everybody just pays ten dollars. And then no charging. Just give a green sticker that says you can go there this year for this green. And figure out how much he makes, how mu- how much income does it come out? Divided by four thousand.
There's a lot of options.
Dave, I, I, I hear you. I disagree. And, and let me tell you why. Uh, if it, a small amount should be free because we want people to do the right thing with those occasional things that you have to dispose of, like the stupid refrigerator that's been sitting on the back porch forever, right?
Or the tires.
Or the tires or whatever.
The long one.
Uh, if it's free a hundred percent of the time, um, that goes in a completely different set of incentives where people think, oh, hey, it's, I, I have, I'm a, I'm a citizen of Monmouth. Uh, I've got cousins in Litchfield. You guys need me to clean out your basement? No problem. I know where to get rid of it. And, uh, and then we've created a whole nother monster. So, I, and I, I hear you that the income, it's not about the income. It's not about the income. We're not trying to make money on disposing of people's trash. Absolutely not. I think we're trying to make sure that folks understand they need to be responsible for their own trash. And they got a whole lot of it. If there's a small inconvenient charge that reminds them that it's expensive to throw this stuff out at the taxpayers' expense.
Yeah. What I'll add to that, I mean, just to drive around town, there's a lot of residents have private trash hauler dumpsters in their, in their yard that don't, that are paying taxes for the transfer station to operate, but are utilizing private haulers. Um, so the fees that we have are, are really only going to the residents that are, that are coming there. Um, and obviously they have the small amount of free stuff to help offset that. Um, but that does discourage, you know, um, extra dumping. And for people that have private haulers, you know, they're not even using the facility and and household trash and recycle is completely free. You can, you know, you know, there's no charge at all. It's just when you wanna get into those uh, other commodities of demo and dirty wood and other.
Well, and, you know, I think about my mother, how many tires or refrigerators, usually if she gets a new refrigerator, she pays Dave's appliance to get the other one out of there for her. So, you know, the older people in town that are just getting their trash, you know, taking their trash to the dump, paying ten more dollars and then never having the opportunity to get rid of a refrigerator or tires, you know? And there's a lot of older people in town that might not be excited about that. So.
I don't know if I'm hearing you right, Mark, but it seems you're saying just eliminate the free free program. And I, 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 I think I tend to agree with that. It's too hard to, I mean, we're going through all this mash, mashing nations to try to figure out how to give away free stuff. I mean, when we enact that, uh, legislation, you have to think about ease of application. If it becomes terribly difficult, then forget about it. I mean, everyone pays for his own trash or her own trash. Their tires and, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of not continuing free passes.
Have a couple of weeks to think about this before.
You know, I, I had to scramble to get the meeting with the three of us and, and I didn't have time to, to type and prep everything up. But I wanted to present it tonight that I was going to get on the agenda for two weeks out for a discussion on this to kind of finalize it. Um, so, um, I, I don't mind the writing on the registration. I, I don't mind the writing on the registration, I think some people are gonna have some heartburn over pulling the registration out and having us write on it, some people are gonna be fine with that, some people aren't. I'm not sure, there could be.
I mean, I don't want.
Chief, you would know.
Chief, Chief Furman would know.
You can't. Anybody at the freaking transfer station, you, you give them that, do they need to know any of that information? No.
Right, but if, if you.
That's the whole point of the dump pass. And so that they know you live in Monmouth, but they don't know your address.
Right, but they'd only be asking for the registration if you were asking for the free credit on something you were dumping. That's what was presented, so. And that's.
But you want a sticker now too, which does the same thing.
Right, but if you want free stuff, there has to be a way to. To. Keep it in line, keep it in check and, and know who's got what, I mean. That's, that's been this whole debate, that's why I've been, you know, discussing the logistics of this with the people that are gonna have to deal with it and. You know, so stickers, yes, but it creates this, so what do we do with it?
And stop letting whales come here, that's your option.
Well, they pay.
They, they pay. They pay handsomely.
Yes.
I can't see taking away the free stuff and just up our taxes and now you then tell us we can't take free stuff to that's whatever's on our list. People, people are gonna revoke about that for sure.
I just wanna bring it up tonight.
I know, I'm just letting, it's letting you think, well, we have a few that just threw away with the free stuff, well. You know.
You're gonna find a lot.
You're gonna find a lot of dumb stuff.
Have we already ordered the stickers?
No.
Well, maybe we should stay with the present system. If it's so important, if it's so important to, uh, have free stuff. Stick with, stick with the present system.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're paying for it when you registered your vehicle.
Right.
And your taxes, so essentially, we're paying for it and it's just proof that we're paying for it is the sticker.
So you're adding like twenty dollars or twenty-five dollars to everybody's tax bill. If you get rid of it.
Well, as Mark pointed out, we're paying for it anyhow. We called the dump and we have to, or excuse me. The transfer station, we're paying for it anyhow to haul it off. Or whatever.
Yeah, have you contacted other towns to see how they do it, like other surrounding towns, like just, like, replay, just to see what others do?
Uh, yeah, I can't find any towns that have a free system like we do.
So.
An anomaly there, most towns, and I, in our meeting, we looked at other towns, uh, rates for demo disposal and other items we have on our list and. Um. We're a bargain by a long shot, um. You know, we're, you know, our couch or queen mattress is, uh, ten or fifteen dollars. Uh. Reedfield Fayette Wayne, it's like thirty-five dollars, so. Uh, again, I'm not trying to fleece the residents with the charge, it's just trying to attempt to offset the cost. Of it, which is why the fees have been there, um. So, and demo costs have skyrocketed in the last year with, as is everything else in this world as we know, so.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make a system work that doesn't upset residents, doesn't upset transfer station tenants, doesn't upset town office people and, and makes it manageable for us to. To offer a service that's a benefit, but also not as cumbersome and, and bogged down by everything, so.
Like larger transfer stations like, like Winter, for example, they have a scale.
Yeah.
So you drive in, they weigh it, you pay off that, off that weight, whatever it is you drag in, it's not household trash, the household trash, it's a ten dollar. Permit, I think that's good for two years and you can throw as much, you know, household trash as you want in there.
Yeah, the town.
Town I live in is all, is all pay to throw, I, I can't take household trash in there, it's, everything has to be in those big black bags and I buy stickers. And put it on there and I paid for everything that goes into that transfer station, they don't, they don't give away anything.
So the town I moved from did, um, what he was suggesting is the ten dollars and you get a dump pass, that's how it was where. From the town I lived in four years ago now, um, and we paid ten dollars and we got to dump, but it was a limit per day. So, you know, whoever was walking around, they saw you put twenty tires in there, they're gonna be like, oh, heck no, you can only put five, like, there was a limit for a day. But we paid for the pass when we registered our car.
Yes.
They go, everybody's kind of, they have their own.
Yeah, not to diminish what you're saying, there's a lot of systems out there, there's a lot of ways to do it, um. I'm just trying to, just trying to work with what we already have and. Again, make as minimal a change as possible, we get still do what was voted on by the board earlier this year, which is to go to stickers and. For the reasons that was debated then, so. Um. I'd say I'll, I, I'm okay with the idea, Brighton, um, I. Just, you know, let's see what the feedback is over the next couple of weeks, think about it, shoot me ideas and. Let's set this for the next meeting and, and try to come up with a final.
Everybody can think about it and come back in a couple, we, we don't need it, it's not an agenda item tonight anyway, so we're not looking for a decision, but I think your feedback is helpful. Yeah, and if you have any other ideas, shoot them to me and I can, I can meet with the team and we can bring something to you for the next meeting.
Yeah. Not trying to bombard you tonight or sidetrack you or slide anything through, I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'm coming with this, we gotta figure it out. Let's let it get out there and let feedback come in and you guys think about it more too. What was something that we hope will be trouble-free as possible for everybody.
Well, just for his history. The three. Old, um, seats here, we went down this rabbit hole. Seven, eight, nine times, so we've already, you know, talked about it a bunch, and if you weren't at the meetings or something, but. We've already. Had the big discussions, so.
I know we have, it's just.
Yes, oh, I know, coming up with the final details, because they're, you know. We talked about it six ways from Sunday on several meetings, so.
We did, so.
Yeah, so it's not a new thing.
Uh, I don't have anything else to bring up unless you have a question. Oh, David? Um. Eminent. Uh. Pardon the, uh, floating target, uh, hopefully we won't get flooded up with a hurricane hit this weekend or early next week, uh, it's, I'm, I'm on the schedule, there, there. It's just a floating target, every day. Something happens, um.
Every day it rains, just one day later.
Every day it rains, one day later, every day, you know, so. We're on the schedule, uh, we were hoping next week would they be here, but that's, that's got pushed, and so we're, we're into the first of October at this point. I don't have a concrete date, it's just, it's a floating date, it's there, um, same thing with Cressy Road. Um, the contractor especially, he got a large job up at King Field. Uh, I think he told me on the phone over this weekend, eighteen tri-axle dumps in King Field doing a job. Soon as they were done with that, he'd be down here at Cressy Road. So that's, again, relies on his schedule, it's floating, it's going to happen, Compton Hall Parking Lot, we're on the schedule. There are papers, it's, it's floating, it's, it's imminent, it's, it's gonna happen, it's just a matter of, of. When, when, it's soon, so, I've stressed to all of them that I do not want to be bumped off this year's schedule, they really. That was part of my. You know, bid to them and I understand that, uh. Other nature may have other ideas, uh, but it's eminent, it's. I'm chomping at the bit myself, I, I want this stuff done.
Striping the roads. Probably after, after paving.
Right, I, I'm gonna have five roads to strike once paving's done and. Uh, if that guy can't lay down some crosswalk. Strikes for me when he's here doing that, then I'm gonna get a gallon of paint, do it myself, but. Yes, he's facing the same problems we all are, he's extremely short-staffed, he has one whole painting truck that's not even. Moving out of his yard on a daily basis, he's working with a skeleton crew, he's trying to find labor, he can't, so. Uh, he's just fighting the battle we all are, I'm frustrated that it's not been done yet, but. With five roads being paved now in early October, I'm gonna have to have five road stripes. Once they're done, so hopefully at that point it'll all get done before the snow flies.
Just in time to scratch it out.
Just in time for me to scrape it all off, my friend with carbide cutting edges, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, any, any luck on for, uh, a truck?
Yes, I, uh. Found two trucks and they're way over. What was appropriated to the twenty-one vote now meeting. So, I'm hunting and keep looking, um. Last thing I wanna do is come back and say I'd like to ask for more money to get a truck now, so. I'm working on it, I'm working the channels, working the salesmen, working the companies. Trying to find something that's out there that will work. It's gonna meet our needs and it's in our budget. Nothing yet. Yes. A new truck is pushed off and now by international till December. So. At this point, I don't expect it anytime soon, I was at a training last week with a bunch of other public works officials from Maine. And they, we got commiserating about what's going on in the industry and they. Basically, in talk with a group, about a dozen of us. The consensus was that almost every public works agency has waited almost two years for a new truck in the last. Twenty-four months, you know, since the pandemic started, so, we're not. By any means the only one experiencing this, which is feeling the effects of it.
Can't we fix up the one that's for sale? For this year?
That one, that one's beyond repair, but it's been replaced already, I found a used truck, um, to replace that one, so. But yes, uh, so, that one, that truck was scheduled for replacement anyway, and I replaced it with a used truck, because I could not.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean, explains out another year out of the one we got there that we're trying to sell, till you find one, another one?
Truck he's talking about is a lot bigger than that one.
Yeah, the, it's a, it's a, like a full-size dump truck. Yeah, but that one, just for your information, that one has issues that I can't get parts for it anymore. Or discontinue the parts, I can't find the parts used. Uh. Along with the rust issues of it being a ten-year-old dump truck, so, it's, at this point, it's beyond feasibility to attempt to resurrect it.
And, being down a couple of drivers, if the new truck does come in and you're potentially without. Someone else to drive a truck, are you gonna have a couple of trucks sitting with no drivers?
Right, at this point, right now, I'll have two trucks sitting in a snowstorm. Whether I get the new truck or not. So.
Uh, so getting the truck, be nice for someone to be able to drive it, but it's not gonna change how quickly the roads get plowed or.
Right. But I do with the new truck, alleviate the truck breaking down during the storm, and that problem won't be there.
Yep.
Uh, but, yes, I'll, I'll be short two people to fill out the flower routes and the cleanup stuff, so. Um. Uh, it's gonna be an interesting winter. Busy winter. So.
Ready for rain.
Yes, warm rain.
Not ice, yeah.
Good evening. I, um. Might have been interested, so it's what. Proceeds the check, uh, grant money for eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, this is money that was spent. Last year. To equip one of the cruisers and, uh, the prior chief, uh, Kevin Lawrence put in for this grant and. The check finally came in last week, so. Uh, that, it was good to get that in the mail, um. I currently have another grant coming in for seven hundred and fifty dollars to replace one of the body cameras that. No longer serviceable. So we're just waiting for that check to come in. Presently working with RSU two to develop the school safety policy, we've been meeting. About every, once every three weeks, um. Just retell us a special thanks to Winter PD, uh. Fire Department for their assistance and, and with the ambulance and the assistance for helping develop that policy and put everything in place. We've still got a long road ahead of us, but, um, we're well on our way to getting, getting, um, things situated over there. They have installed. Lock boxes by every door in the school, we had an issue with us not having access to schools. Um. Chief Roy. Gave us keys to their lock boxes, um, so we would have access to a school key. To get in in case of emergency, but it doesn't solve the problematic issue of where those. Fire Department lock boxes are located. So the school has gone and put punch pad boxes by every, every exit in the school. Um. Inside that lock box is a key fob and a key. Which will give the officers entering the school, should we need an emergency situation, that problem will be solved. Uh. Keys are not in the box as of yet. And that's because they're having a hard time getting that many keys made up, so. It's in the process, things are coming along, it's working well, um, the other thing we've got, I, I, I. Have them do and they are doing it right now is. Uh, every window in the school. Will have a number assigned to it. Same number as the door or the classroom. That way if something's going on in a specific classroom, not from the outside, we'll know exactly which classroom that problems and. We're going in, so, that's another step they've taken to help us out to, um. Believe me, some of the concerns from the first responders. October seventh, we're gonna be doing some more in-service training with the, with. All the educators among the school system for the, uh, uh. Crisis. If a crisis situation were to arise in one of the schools, so we do one hands-on training with, with. Educators, so they know what to expect in a situation like that, from us and what we're gonna expect from them. Now, that, the school has been real good at opening the doors and helping us out and giving us what we need. Saturday, we'll be assisting with the Apple Pass this weekend, uh, closing down Main Street between Pleasant Street and Maple Street. Uh, Public Works and the Fire Department's gonna be assisting us with that, um. Dan's gonna be helping me place barricades out. Around quarter of seven, because everybody wants to close that down around seven, so. I'll buy you a gun. All right, two breakfasts. Uh, I knew twenty, twenty-two Ford SUV is in, we've taken delivery of it, it is presently in Manchester being out, uh, excuse me, in. New Hampshire being outfitted right now, it's a new equipment. Uh, and I'd like to take the opportunity to bring it to the next selection meeting once it's set up, so you guys can actually see. Finished product and, and. What we've all accomplished by going forward and, and, um. Putting in, getting the new cruiser, so we can have consistency throughout all, all of this. So. And I just wanna thank you for that help and, and getting that done, it really does make it safer for the officers. This is the liability of the town by doing that. Um, month of August, uh, we had a ref leaving the scene of a personal, personal injury accident, um. The specific reason why the person left the scene, I'm not sure you can guess what that was. Um, we have one arrest for operating under the influence, one arrest for operating after suspension and violating conditions of release and. One arrest for gross sexual abuse, please, that, um. Took several days to put together and have alternative ones to put together. But it, uh. The evidence we needed. Um, page clear of the report, it's just, uh, the breakdown of, of all we had. In the month. Uh. Pretty cut and dry, you look down through the N C what. What we've had, the calls, three hundred and fifteen calls in the month of August. And by, um, you see the breakdown by hour and day. During our busy time, but during the week, as well as by the hour. Uh. Month by month comparison, uh, I like this report, this report here, uh. Includes. Police calls. Rescue calls, fire calls in this report, everything that's dispatched through Stilman is printed out. On this form, so you can see collectively what the county services have been doing. It all includes the animal control offices. Complaints in there as well. And the, the very last page, um. It's just a graph which summarizes, um, everything that that report holds. Uh, and you can see, starting in June, um. Will be increased in the number of calls there, and that's because that's when law enforcement came on to the Stilman CAD system. Was June first, so that's why, uh, June you see that high number, but as you can see, um. As we are consistently reporting, that number is consistently going up by the month, so. Think that was a good, um. Piece of information for you folks to have. Another, another issue, um, I just wanna bring up is. The fact that we are having, uh, our weekend shift, we're going. We have no reserves to fill our weekend shift, which is Saturday and Sunday day shift from six in the morning till. Four thirty in the afternoon. Uh, and. The three full-time. Uh, and the three full timers and myself have been picking up those open shifts and covering them. And it's getting to the point where, um, they're getting burned out, you know. Sixty, seventy hours overtime pay period, it's just too much. And that's something we're gonna have to look at in the rest here in the near future. Trying to find reserve officers and you just can't do it. The one no one wants to get into law enforcement nowadays and. No one with a full-time job wants to get into law enforcement, we have to get, and that's so much upfront training time to in order to do it. And there's quite an expense to becoming a a reserve officer nowadays, I mean, they have to. By the time you hit down phase three, you're 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 out of pocket for five hundred dollars, just the the. Ability to work a part-time job is gonna pay you nineteen dollars a month, so. Finding part timers right now, and I'm like, we're not the only department having this problem. Every small department, every big department around is having problems finding people right now. One of the, one of the things that came out yesterday is state police down fifty-seven positions and they. Initiated a new program, hiring program, which is gonna streamline bluepens, which are certified full-time officers into the state police. Realm, which uh had a considerable amount of money. Increase in money and benefits, which is gonna hurt us smaller departments because. You're gonna make twenty-four dollars an hour, you go to state police and you make thirty dollars an hour, you know. It's a no-brainer. Some of these people that have bluepens and have been, you know, two years out of out of out of the the Buffy Academy and. They're getting offered this for a one-time deal to come join the ranks of state police, you know, if I was that agent. In that position, I would jump, go there myself, you know, but. Uh, just all stuff we have to think about in the future is that. Got shifts that are gonna be going unfilled, not a lot we can do about it right now. So we're not the only ones having that problem, or the department around having that problem, we'll just have to address that and move forward.
Any questions? So we've lost a reserve officers?
Yes.
Essentially.
Yeah, just just. Just stop working.
Okay.
We have one, we have one active reserve and he works one shift a month. So that leaves seven to nine shifts a month that are left wide open that. We have to fill with the overtime or, you know, overtime with full-time officers and myself. We only do sixty, seventy, eighty hours a week for so long before you add enough, you know.
Very low upfront investment.
And you still fit into.
It's not like you do anything. That's what I mean, it's like, but he comes to every meeting, I mean, whatever meetings on the docket, and then you see downtown all the time, so.
When my daughter was going to the academy to do be a reserve officer, she uh. Went into the office there to, I I guess, to ask if uh that I could get a shirt that said criminal justice academy. And the lady looked it up and said, oh, yeah, his name's right here, it says old. That was, and that was a long.
Any questions on the August report?
I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, this page here. I noticed that forty-three percent of your calls for the month of August have to do with traffic stop.
Yes.
Is that mostly speeding?
Yeah, traffic stop could be speeding, it could be a. Unregistered, it could be unexpected, it could be an O U I stop, it could be.
Okay. Uh, do you, at one point, you were able to tell us like what percentage of those were. You know, uh, involving speeding issues and. How often folks were actually cited versus just given a warning and a.
Yeah, I can tell you that out of the, out of the hundred and thirty-eight traffic stops, there were twenty-eight citations removed.
Okay. Sounds very reasonable to me.
I have one question. So is the new SUV gonna have a trailer hitch?
The new SUV? I think it came with a trailer hitch on it.
Roll out that sign. You don't have a trailer hitch.
And uh, I uh, I was approached by a constituent, I won't say who. That uh, had some concerns about um, some shenanigans and north monoliths on the sidewalk.
Yes.
Have you, have you had a chance to, have you, were you aware of that and have you had a chance to pay?
I, it was brought to my attention.
Yeah.
Yes, and we are addressing that.
Someone said it's still happening.
Shenanigans.
Shenanigans.
Is that a official?
It is, it's like right after, it's just before, it's in alphabetical order, so always before the T's here. Shenanigans.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I, I had an another request to hunt on town property. And when I looked at your motion last week, it was very specific to that individual's request, so I don't know whether you wanna take these. One at a time, or whether you just wanna tell me whether you want me to authorize this to happen whenever basically someone asks. So that's why.
Is this a different parcel?
Yeah.
Yeah, this this doesn't specifically say where it, where it was, you just wanted permission to hunt on town property.
Think I'd like to know, because if. If it's the fairgrounds, it's probably. Yeah, you know, or it's the beach or.
I don't think that you could be there.
Exactly.
It was my understanding, we voted to give you the authorization to let people, if people come in and ask permission, that you had to go, had to give them permission. I didn't think it was, I wasn't under the impression it was a one-time thing, I thought.
No.
If it's moving forward.
I I just wanted to clarify that. The motion, that was quite clear, because you mentioned the bog in. When you repeated it, you said the bog, so I'll attempt to make sure, but I will use. I will ask people that are more knowledgeable about where these parcels might be before I say yes, you know, maybe I'll ask. Chief or Dan, or somebody that that's lived here longer, so I'm not giving permission where somewhere it might be inappropriate.
Right behind Town Hall.
I think that's really all I, that's all I had.
Oh, yes, is.
Oh, I have a question for Justin, before we move on to department, are we still on? So, uh, Justin, uh, just kind of circling back on some of Dan's issues, you'd mentioned. In a previous conversation that you might be exploring. The possibility of finding a contractor who might be interested in plowing. Say, just the dirt roads, because that requires a separate.
Yeah, uh, what I was kind of. I didn't say we were, we were actively doing, I was saying it's something that we may have to bring to you, depending on what what. Uh, Dan is gonna be in uh for shape as we get a little closer to winter.
Okay.
And at that point, we may come back to you and say, you know, we need another solution and we may need to find some money to get him some help. It just depends. On what he thinks he's gonna be able to do and then what your expectation is. For, um, you know, how quickly some of these roads are cleaned off, um. So that's gonna be a different experience for the residents.
Excuse me, it's still on the table, but you haven't gone anywhere with it.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Uh, I, to go back again, the sand issue is. We're getting sand, right?
Winter sand?
Winter sand.
Yeah, it's, it's already.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm probably gonna start hauling it uh first week of October. It's all ready to go, just gotta get it to the pile.
I do have a question, what's the, what's your price?
Well, I I would admit I don't have the exact price on sand. Last year, we paid seven dollars a yard. Uh, he said it would go up a little bit, so I'm 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 assuming eight to nine dollars. Uh, salt. I spoke to the gentleman a month ago, he gave me the number. I don't remember it, I don't wanna say it out loud, I don't remember exactly, but I did swallow my tongue a little bit. Um, but he said we have plenty and we won't run out. I'm like, that's great, so.
No one wants it, it's so expensive.
Yeah, so, um, little increase in price, but, um. Last year, we didn't go over budget with what they ordered, and I ordered. A little less sand this year because I had so much left over, so I should be fine, but. Yeah.
I'm just curious, would running stall rate downs by my own anyways?
Yeah, I I I have a number in my head, but I don't dare to say it because it was just long enough ago that I don't know that I've got the number right. But it was a definite increase over last year.
Okay, on to uh select board reports. I I was asked to bring up something actually to the select board, and that's. What uh will happen or what's going to be done to the sculpture? Uh, this is from uh. Larry Bougie and uh Dave Bartlett, who is the principal here, this is you.
Well, we, we talked about that at one of the meetings, that once we have. The final landscaping and grading, they're gonna, they were gonna find an appropriate spot. Once they figured out how the parking lot was gonna go and where the parking is gonna be.
Here.
Yeah.
In this, okay. And the the photos that are, some of them are down at that office now, I guess maybe they all were, uh. That was all part of a uh grant, I guess, that that sculpture. And the photos uh that they got when the uh this, the. This building was renovated, but I mean, the. The uh, the old Monmouth Middle School was renovated, uh, so. Uh, I guess there was some concern about what was. Dave Bartlett had a concern about what was gonna be done with the photos, where they would be.
I know nothing about the photos.
Okay.
I think there's four hanging in my office and there's two or three hanging in the hall, it's because when they brought them down to the town office, but I, I don't have any. I mean, they're just hanging on the wall, I mean, I don't.
Well, Larry Bougie suggested that we put them on in that building. I said we could put them in here, some of them, uh. It, Dave Bartlett said they should be displayed together, uh, but I don't know how. That was his feeling.
What are the pictures? I think pictures of.
They're around town, like.
Oh, pictures of stuff around town.
Yeah, they're like, you know, the tower and Compton Hall, you know, different, just different places.
There was a picture of Earl sitting there with this cane, uh. All kinds of different things going on in town, places in town.
Yeah.
The sculpture you're referring to, is that the one that's out on the grass?
Laying on the grass, yeah.
I'm already worried about hitting it this winter with a cloud, or we get too beat of snow, moving snow with a loader, so I'll just have to. Market.
Get it off.
Find a new place and just plant it temporarily.
Well, why would we do that and spend money to do that when we just end up moving it, when we're trying to.
Half-hour work.
I know, but it's not his job to do that.
I don't dare to move it, uh, I'm afraid I'll break it. I didn't see how the demolition company moved it. I mean, if I'm asked to and or told to, when the time comes, I'll do it, but. I don't wanna move it any more than I have to, and I'm afraid to touch it right now.
But that, you know, that that process is gonna be starting, you know, hopefully in the next month to start. Doing things and there'll be equipment up here and I can put it on, we've got a meeting on the twenty. Eighth, I wanna say, something, twenty-ninth, so. I can bring it up at that meeting.
Just wanted to verify sculpture.
Yeah.
It's already on my mind, like, say, I don't wanna move, I don't have to.
Yeah, it's.
I don't wanna touch.
You don't wanna, yeah, and you don't wanna hit it with a cloud, so.
Comes to it, I will, I'll do the best I can.
Yeah, so. I'll bring it up at that meeting. We'll stick your down.
Okay. Uh, I was wondering, what, what's the progress on our audit?
They're re, they're, we're hoping to re-engage them in Oc, in October, the second, third week in October, that's what they said. Our K O said they would be available the week of the thirteenth or the fourteenth, whatever that week. Is, and we're hoping that Mark will be able to. We're gonna pay him additional fees to do the year that he's not responsible for, which is the one two years ago, where he said he'd help. Write the financial statements and stuff for that, and he'll bill us accordingly, but that's fine, we'll get it done, hopefully.
So we'll have two years in one.
Yeah. Hopefully, our K O has a schedule, they have a week for us, so it really just depends how much they can get through in that week, and then if not, it'll get pushed till they have time to come back.
And legally, we have to.
We have to get them done, yeah.
Get them done.
Yeah.
And have them available for everybody to see.
Yep, yep.
Which means maybe a a kind of a town report.
It's the only thing that's legally required in the town report, that's why we didn't print any this year, because we don't have an audit within it, they don't. That that's what has, that's the only requirement in a, in a town report is the audit, so.
It just supplies, of course, people with a lot of. In information.
Right, right, absolutely, yeah.
And uh, the foreclosure.
Mark asked me about that, I I've been working on a policy over the past couple of weeks, um, Donna. Is here on Monday and it's turned on, you know, open to the public day. And I anticipate um her, Lori and I will sit down like we did last time and we'll go through the list and. We'll see what what the next group of them is that we bring to you to to deal with, but first, we will have to, um, um. Get the policy finished and I'll bring that to you first, so that then we know. This is the way I should present these to you, and this is what your responsibilities are and what mine are. So everybody knows what we're doing and we treat all of them same at that point on.
These will all be, like, the the foreclosure process will have been. All, all the needs or things have been met, and, and, you know, none are like, uh. Like, something that we didn't do, what we're supposed to do.
Right, that's what we have to go through, I mean, it's 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 very, it's a very tedious process to go in back years and. Pull these out, I mean, we're looking for the green cards that go with the certified mail. I have to have the lien notices, I have to look at the timeline and make sure that they were mailed and received within the timeframe that they were. So each one, it it, it's not like I could just print the list out of tree, I would bring it to you, it's like I have to. We literally sit with each one and have to look through the file, and they usually they're thick, it's typically, these are the same people that. That are always late, so they usually have a lot of, a lot of stuff in there, in their file, so we have to go through each one of them like that, so we'll bring them to you in chunks. It's not gonna be a big list, because we just don't have the time to, you know, to go through them all at once, so we'll be bringing them to you kind of as we can get them done, but the. The first step would be to get the policy done, so that you all agree how you wanna treat these, and then. And then, once we have that, we'll we'll start bringing them to you, so you can make decisions on how to dispose of them or keep them or whatever.
And I had a question about, uh. I I I actually was talking to Dave Shaw, and he said that in previous years. Uh, uh, he had brought to the, when we, uh. Set the tax rate, it's about four million dollars each year in our new construction. And uh, this year, uh, it was, it only showed one million. Oh. It was there some, and was this, I guess this might be because, uh. People weren't coming in and getting permits, they were simply doing what they wanted to do and. Uh, without going through with the the legal need to uh get a permit. So therefore, uh, what we have recorded is only one million instead of. In previous years, it was up like four million, so wha- what can we do?
Well, um. Donna and I have, I I've had conversations about this too, and she's not completely confident. That she's getting, that she's been getting all of the information that she used to get when, when Dave was there, it was just more consistent, I think, when we'd sent. We've gone through so many code officers, you know, each one comes on and takes them a little bit to figure out what's going on, and it's a possibility that. You know, through all these transitions, I mean, we've had, what, four code officers in two years or whatever it's been, so. Every time there's a transition, there's there's institutional memory that's kind of lost, and they come in and they might not know enough to, you know. Donna needs to know that this happened, maybe, maybe. Donna needs to know that this happened. Maybe maybe that's it. Maybe it's also some of the, some of the COVID stuff and people were just kind of doing what they wanted to do because no one was. You know, there's no one around and checking on anything and um. So we've had those conversations. Um. Uh, she's, she's coming in next Monday and her her plan on on top of doing the COVID thing is to go sit with uh Richard and try to figure out a process. By which, just so that he knows what she needs from, from his work. Uh, when Dave was here talking to Donna, they used to, they used to go out and ride around and do inspections together because Dave would know. That they didn't pull a permit for that deck, but then there'd be a deck there, you know, so they kinda. They'd work hand in hand because he sees all the permits and she, but she needs to have those, those permits after the fact. Or at least the information transferred so she knows that it happened and she can go up and look at it for assessing. Purposes. So yes, there's a possibility, you know, I'm I'm not sure. What the, what the issue is, but it could have been either either of those things. We weren't getting it uh transition or part COVID people were just kinda. You know, not pulling permit. I don't, I don't know.
So, but it missing that. Any three million dollars worth of valuation, that really did it affect our tax rate?
Oh, I mean, it'd be three million times. Nineteen mil, yeah. So it it could, yeah, if if that in fact is the case that there should have been, yes, I mean, it definitely has an impact.
What's the potential impact uh to the map?
Do you wanna go with three million?
Sure.
Fifty eight thousand?
As I was, personally, I was shocked when my taxes went up fourteen hundred dollars. Which I. I've never had them go up that much in in just one, but I know the homes that.
Right, went down, yes.
I don't know if anybody else is.
Add add more to that. If you live on a lake, add another thirty percent or forty percent.
I'm sorry you live on a lake. I'm sorry you live on the lake.
Well, I said I couldn't use, by the way.
Well, it's rained, but you know, hey.
So you yours went up?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, thirty percent more than yours.
More than, oh, really?
If you live on one of them drunks in North Monmouth that you can't even see that's polluted, it went up too.
Yeah, I expect, well, yeah. Oh, anyway, um.
On on that same note, talking about, I mean, permits and. If if it's been averaging three or four million dollars a year in construction, I would find it hard to believe that we had two or three million dollars worth of homes built with no permits. People can get away with building a deck or putting a little addition behind their house or something and and no one may know. But the amount of things that could have gotten built um in the last two years without being noticed. Without a permit um is not two to three million dollars for sure.
Uh, price of material residential construction is down.
Yeah, they're they're having, I mean, when someone builds a new house, there's definitely a permit, I.
You have to understand how how it's done, though. If I, if there was four million dollars worth of value in a single year, which. Always was, you know, for a long time it was. The asset value of that four million is only a million and a half or two million because. Not all of those projects are done to the completion. So, you know, they're at thirty percent, they're at fifty percent, they're at seventy, but over four years. You accumulate all of that.
Yep.
So by not having accurate information three years ago. It it manifests itself the next year, the next year. Now this year, she has no information of what was done. Since I left.
It sounds like a uh an office internal issue. More than people are doing stuff without getting permits.
Well, I know.
Just gotta figure it out.
The amount my taxes went up, I put an addition on my house and I know she got that information. Because my third party inspector sent his, no, she never came. Nobody ever came. She drove in my driveway. I don't know if she did, but. Nobody ever came and went into my house or I saw anybody taking pictures and I'm. But, I mean, I know my third party inspector filled out, you know, and sent what he had to do to go in, so they got mine. They got, mine didn't stay the same, so. By any means.
Okay, and here, anything else?
We had a meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Last night. Um, we're starting up our monthly meetings now that the summer has come and gone. And uh we're revising the uh. We're looking at making revisions to the facade improvement program, both its. Uh footprint. And uh its scope of work. Like what sorts of things are covered and what's not. Um, so we will, we're gonna have one more meeting on it. To actually come up with some very specific language for the select board to consider. Um, and we'll probably end up bringing that to you in. Uh, a month and a half, something like that. We gotta finalize the language at our next meeting. And and come back to you with some recommendations. Um, some of that includes some of the concerns that have been voiced in the past about. Um, you, what, one question was, do certain roofs qualify for facade improvement? Uh, when they are visible from the street. Uh, another one was. Uh, do certain businesses qualify? Uh, even though they might not be specifically in the TIF zone. And a third one was uh residential, do residential. Properties qualify within the zone that were uh uh discussed. And then lastly, I think we're looking at redefining the zone so that it is more consistent with. Where our sewer and water infrastructure already is. So right now, it's a very small zone that. Excludes a lot of sewer and water properties, served properties, and um we're exploring the idea of. Broadening it to any place where you get sewer or water. Um, would by definition be in this facade qualified? Or giving us an application to apply for facade improvement? So, anyway, we'll come back to you, F Y I. Um, the other thing I've got, and it's a question for Justin, you'd mentioned some privacy on. The R F P for the solar installation at the transfer station, not the dump, the transfer station. And uh I'm just wondering where we're at on that.
Um, one of the, one of the vendors had a suggestion to put it in a different place, and I wanted to talk to Dan about that too. We have two bids. One is uh from revision. They're interested in actually building something. Here like you, like you've seen before, and the other one is for us to join um a solar farm they're building in uh Bucksport. So those are really gonna be the two choices about, you know, whether you actually wanna own infrastructure or whether you wanna just take the credits and. And uh and run, so that's kind of what it is, but I wanted to, there's two sites and one of them I wanna run by Dan, you know, to just so I I have a full picture to have a discussion with you about.
Sundog doesn't wanna do a new R F P.
The other one is is a firm in Massachusetts that's building a big, you know, a large one, a large array in Bucksport somewhere.
If I go with revision.
Well, which would be the worst for us for us to buy in or to pull her on.
The the one that's in Bucksport, I think it's a, I think it's a twenty percent reduction. Basically on what the standard rate would be, and then the other one, um. It will cover the the electrical cost, but we would have to, in the sixth year, we'd have to buy it if we wanted it to be, you know, kind of a worthwhile endeavor for the, for the town. So it's just kind of making a choice about whether you wanna own this stuff um after the, after the six years.
I think that's the difference with Sundog, they, you didn't have to buy it.
Yeah. You don't have to, but your, your rate of return is much slower if you, if you let the investor own it. So if you wanna get the most benefits, you really, you wanna buy it in that six years, so every year after it was built, we would put money in a reserve in each budget until that year. And then you would, you would purchase it and then it's yours, but then you pay to maintain it. If there's any maintenance needed or whatever.
Recondition it when the channel's starting.
Right, that's true too. So there's just some kind of some choices there.
Is is the area out here?
One of them is 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 at the transfer station.
Yeah.
And the other one is at the um. I don't know, he keeps calling it the sand pit. That's why I wanna talk to Dan. I I don't know where that is, so. So, yeah, that's. Yeah, I'll show you how they have it kind of laid out, but I wanted to talk to you first.
Yeah, we looked at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think it was far from the three phase. I remember them talking about that, so.
We'll be bringing that to you once we kind of have it flushed out.
Yeah.
Anything else? Next of the comment.
No hands.
Anybody? On comment?
No hands.
Onto uh to consider the future of the recreation department and to review the recreation commissions. Bylaws.
So this was, this was a, this was a request put on here from Joe, I think, at 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 European, asked to your group's behalf, I think, so that that that's why it's on here. It was. It was an agenda item that was requested, so you might wanna just talk.
Yeah, those, yeah, but, um, so the bylaws that we gave, that he gave you a copy from back in two thousand.
Do we have a copy?
You were given the. Yeah.
I asked Joe to give me what your most recent uh version was, and he said he didn't have a copy of it.
I've given him.
And he was gonna ask you for it.
I did do.
So I didn't have a copy to uh to put in there.
Yeah.
I've been only having one copy. Well, let me, I can explain to you. Let me tell you, so back in two thousand seventeen, the every, all board, all quarters and commissions were reviewing the bylaws by order of the selectmen. We went through and did it. I turned it in two thousand eighteen of March two thousand eighteen, and they never stamped through this. So the only one that we have. Was like nineteen ninety nine or something. It's early. The only changes that we made. Was that we changed, under Article Four, under meetings, we changed it because it said the fourth Monday of each month. And we we meet on Sunday, the second Sunday of each month because we found that was more appropriate for, and it has been for the past ten years of the people that were on the committee. And then section five says the meeting held in March of each year shall be for the approval of the budget. But obviously, we can't do it in March because you guys need to have it through, then so we changed it to December. That's the only changes we've made to this. I, I mean, I only have my one copy here, and the only one. I didn't know, I mean, I didn't realize this was going on, obviously, but Joe did not tell me that you guys were meeting on this. I just happened to see it when I looked on the.
Well, he told me he was gonna reach out to you, so I don't, I don't know.
No, he never contacted me, which is not unusual. Um, but we, you know, Dan and I here because we saw it on. I can send you another copy of this. I mean, it's it's from the original, like I said. Okay, this is.
And so what is it you're asking?
It has to be um accepted by the selectmen. It's the same. This is from the nineteen, I think it's, you can't really see, but I think it's like nineteen ninety seven or nineteen. Yeah, yeah, it's, this is word process. Nice, big, so this, we can read it. And like I said, I can send, you know, I can make copies.
Sure, I can put it on your next agenda.
And just show you both these things that we, well, like I said, there's only three changes on it in word.
I've never seen it originally, so I think I'd like to read it, so.
Yeah.
Well, it makes wonderful reading.
Yes.
I think I have one.
I'm just, it's probably on the web, it should be on the town site.
The older one?
There might be, I, because I, I also gave a copy of the new one to Lori. Three months ago.
Okay.
So she has probably somewhere along the line because I had asked about it.
I don't, I mean, because when you go to the rec committee, it takes you to their site, but I don't.
Right.
Remember.
I don't recall.
Or the, I don't know, it's a bylaws, I know the ordinance, parks ordinances, the under ordinances. But um, I mean, I've been on the committee for a while, which is why, I mean, I keep, I've been secretary, I've been pretty much everything on the board there, so I. And I, my minutes go back many years and I keep copies of this stuff, so. Um, that's why when we brought it up, when we had to renew, when we had to review the um. About using the Zoom meetings. That's when this came up that it had never been. Accepted. So that's why I asked him to set up a meeting and tell us when, so. I don't know. He didn't tell me. Otherwise, I would have had conference for anybody.
I don't, I don't see him on here anywhere. We may have him on the computer somewhere.
I I know there was a concern, maybe it was Joe. Uh, Butcher who um that uh. You, well, your daughter runs the 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 swim program.
Right.
And 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 of course, he, Joe doesn't seem to have any. He allowed, he lets everything uh.
They separated the two jobs last year.
Yeah.
Before Linda did it, but I never saw anything official, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
I never saw anything officially, but Linda did say that they, because we had talked, well, we've talked about it several times at that selection meeting about separating the two because. The rec directors from last previous and Jones are. Tend to not do anything or come down to the beach or whatever, and it's always left it. To the waterfront director to deal with it, and so Linda's the one who officially separated it supposedly, but like I said, then she left, so I really, you know, we never saw anything come our way. But, I mean, Lisa does come to the meetings and, you know, tells us what's going on and gives end of the year reports. But um.
We never dealt with it, right?
Not to my recollection.
Yeah, see, I, that's all I was told that they were, Lori, so Lisa reports to Lori and then and to the record, uh rec commission.
It's functionally how it works is they don't, they they're like two silos, but.
Yeah, because you, so the, so the beach is still under the jurisdiction, so to speak, jurisdiction of the rec commission, but um Joe has nothing to do with it.
Should that be clarified in some kind of?
So with the beach here, I would think that somewhere along the line, there should be something.
Yeah, I don't know if she, if she, if they're, if the, if the formal job descriptions are there, but it's something, something I can look into. That's how, that's how I was told that it worked and.
Yeah, there were, I think there were at one time official official um job descriptions going back a few years.
Yeah.
I I don't have access to those, so I couldn't tell you really where they're in existence. Lori might know. She's been there, you know, been there longer, but I know that it came up as conversation between um Linda and Joe. And all of a sudden, I was told by Joe that it was official, and I said, okay, well, where's the proof, you know? We should know something about it. Like you said, that was all taken care of. I know about that part.
I I I know, I was contacted by uh Winthrop, somebody from Winthrop named Mark Feith, F E I T H. Who does youth football. And he was very interested in uh. Uh, the field out here, that the uh. The old football field and 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 uh he was, he he suggested to me that. Uh, if the two, if like that, our rec department, our rec commission and uh. Maybe that that youth football, he uh got together, they would rebuild the field out here. Uh, make it uh so it was uh slowed properly and uh.
Well, I know that Winthrop Monmouth boys, if they wanted to play football, rec football, they always played at Winthrop because we haven't had a program. I'm not sure what field you're talking about. Okay, I wasn't sure if that's what you were talking about. It's been a while. Um. Yeah, that probably has to go through the fairground.
No, not the fairgrounds. It goes through Comston Hall Trustees.
Well, we never really, we always told the fairground to own that property.
No, they, they don't own the property. They own the buildings, but it is Comston Park, which is owned by the town and overseen by Comston Hall Trustees.
Two or three are sitting at this.
Yes.
I use that, that's, that's, well, nobody has come to the rec. Board that, I mean, we publicize and asked anything about that. I know that, you know, um. Joe does a lot as far as tries to, you know, with basketball and soccer seem to be, then we don't have anybody really that's. Joe does a lot as far as tries to, you know, with basketball and soccer seem to be, then we don't have anybody really that's come. Because baseball and softball are total separate entity, but not, I've not seen anything about rec football. Uh, we could, I mean, I can certainly, I would argue, we can discuss that, but they, they've not contacted any. They contacted Joe, he hasn't said anything.
Oh, because I gave him Joe's number.
Joe's not brought it up, was this just recently?
No, maybe he's two or three weeks.
Yeah, because he called me and I put him, I put him in touch with you just right, because of the field, I didn't know whether, whether he could use it or not, so I sent him to Doug to, because of your other half.
Yeah.
That would be, you know, would, would be good to know, so because um, so we are having, I guess we'll clarify it. So that we are um, as a Rec Commission, having an open house, we're having a morning one first, I don't know, but.
October nineteenth. No, not yet, I'm going to see Lori tomorrow.
Okay.
Taking a call.
We're doing a morning open house here at the building so that people that are available, we started looking at, maybe, you know, like stay at home moms and older, older senior citizens type people. Fab and commands, meet the committee, they, he and I will be there and um, kind of like get an idea from things that they'd like to see, because we, Joe did put out um, a survey a while back, but we only got twenty seven answers. I said, well, you did it on Facebook, so to speak, and you have a lot of people that don't do that type of thing, but we're also going to hold an evening one during the week so that we can get to the working parents and sort of to see, um, to help us plan, what kind of programs do you want? When we have all these ideas, but is that what the people want? We need to know.
Yeah, we had, when Joe talked about that Facebook um, survey, I had suggested to him to do a survey and have it at the polls, because you will get a lot of responses of people at the polls.
Yeah, I said the same thing, yeah.
So um, I think that's where you need to have a survey ready to go for November and ask people what they're interested in, what programs they're interested in seeing, because you're going to get, you know, retirees voting, stay at home moms, parents, you know.
I have this one in October.
Yeah.
Because we had some responses on Facebook, what about the people that work, and they're like, well, yeah, let's start small and get, you know, see if what interests us, because we talked about, they talked about putting the pickleball thing out here.
That should be done by end of this month.
Yeah, we have access to the, to a net and towels and stuff that's on, that.
Without donations.
Being donated, so, and then Joe said he'd take care of the line, so at least they'd have something for the time being.
Yeah.
To play on that there.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, it's, it's a work in progress, but we, you know, we need information from the, like I said, come November, I'll make sure that there's a survey out there so that we need to know in order to work into our budget, what kind of things, you know, make, to utilize the building, what kind of things people want to see, because we'd like to get some more. We had so many, uh, cross countries, cross country speed, well, uh, came to me. Yeah, he came to one of our meetings and talked about, you know, wanting to do something like that so that we could sponsor that type of things, trying to get a few more activities going, so. We're trying. But there, anything else that you guys wanted to?
Well, I think that Winthrop Football wants to, you know, coordinate and do a rec program, you know, this that's going to reach a lot of kids and add another program into what's available and, and Chris has an amazing, you know, cross-country field. A cross-country course, so, and we plow the parking lot for it, so we plow a little area so people can park. So um, but it wouldn't just be for, for kids, I, adults can use it and all of that, so um. And uh, but I think trying to come up with a plan of what other programs and getting that survey out there voting will be a big help and um, you know, moving forward with it, because that's been an, over a year now, I think, conversation, trying to get that moving forward.
Um, so does Joe have this guy's name and number, you know?
Um, I don't think he talked to Joe, I think he took.
Well, he talked to me, I, and I gave him Joe's number.
Okay.
So I don't.
I'll check, I'll check with Joe, I'll email and check it and find out what's going on, if he's heard anything, it's not, I'll get back to you and ask if you have the guy's name and number.
I think his thought was, because what they've been seeing is they've been seeing the monument participation on the Winthrop Pines have been dwindling. So I think his thought was, well, maybe if we had when they were little, if they could stay in town, maybe the parents would be more willing to kind of get them in.
A couple of years ago, we had quite, it's the one, maybe five years in Trenton, Kewell. No, they're little, they're everyone's.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Ralph's kids, they played football and they're, they're good teams or something, and they played when they were little, so I know that, and they played Winthrop, and I know, you know, if you watch, so I know that they did have it something, or maybe it's just like I say, if they, you know, if we can use, I don't know what they use for fields there, but we have the area that they can use it, you know, get a few more kids playing. We just got football, school, high school, back in, before we came.
Nineteen, it ended in nineteen eighty.
I was going to say, in the, it had, it had to be before the nine, nineteen ninety.
Well, the football ended in the soccer program when Wills, Litchfield and Sabathis went to Oak Hill, that's when the football program ended, because our numbers dropped so drastically, and so, yeah, seventy-six, so I don't, if, I think that soccer started the next year for boys and we continued with field hockey. And then field hockey went for girls, and then in the, when I was in high school, our sophomore year was the last year of field hockey, and then our junior, which would have been eighty-three, became soccer for girls. Yeah, we had field hockey.
Your memory is so much better than mine. What would you want to be the coach?
Be afraid, be very afraid, those sticks hurt.
Yeah, I remember. Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we've got to have those copies if we're going to approve something.
You want hard copy?
No, if you just.
I just need a stretch, I've been sitting for an hour and a half.
Okay, uh, so we're all set with that?
Guys?
With that, alright, thank you.
Until, uh, you get the.
Yeah, exactly.
And next is to consider amending the purchasing policy.
So the only, the, the only real change I wanted to, I wanted to put in front of you, with our new um, process by which the department has to pay the bills, they're not all coming into the town office, they actually have a little bit, they have more responsibility on their end to upload uh, these documents. Under the current practice, everything over a thousand has to come to me, so, so if Chief has, has something, he has to send it over with Donna to get my signature on it before they can upload it. So my suggestion was, was to lift that number a little bit, because in today's world, a thousand dollars, we're not buying very much for a thousand dollars, so. So if I could get that to two thousand or twenty-five hundred, it would just alleviate a lot of sort of minor bills that I have, that they have to shuffle into me and then I have to send back to them, the process.
How often is there a problem? Like, when you look at it?
Almost never, and, and with our new process too, there is another set of eyes, I mean, uh, our business manager is an accountant, he knows kind of what's, what might not look right, he has copies of all the bills, so there's the department heads are already looking at it, and it's going to somebody else who's also looking at it uh, uh, before it's actually paid out, um. So that's basically what I'm asking for, and I changed the formatting on this thing to a font that I like better, that's, it's, it's easier for me to read. But other than that, I moved the paragraphs around so it looks better to my eye, and that's really the only change. It was just to increase that, uh, uh, that minimum, the maximum amount, yeah, under the small purchases that the department has can authorize without, without my signature. Because I have to, all these invoices have to be signed um, by the person submitting them now, so that Mark knows that there have been approvals to be paid. So a lot of them are coming over to my desk afterwards to be signed, and before, when we kind of processed them out, it wasn't, wasn't physically having to touch all of these.
Twenty-five hundred is enough?
Twenty-five hundred would get rid of a lot of the small stuff that I just think I don't really need to look at, uh, we departments usually sometimes spend a thousand dollars on, on their, on, on cleaning supplies or, or minor things that they're stocking up on. It's just not really worth.
One white claw is thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Right, so that's just a lot of sort of routine purchases that we're kind of getting caught in this, this small purchase, just the way everything's gotten so expensive.
Uh, do you need a motion?
Yes, because this, this is your policy, so.
I make a motion, we approve the change of the small purchases to twenty-five hundred dollars in the cost.
Thank you.
So the motion by Chris, second by Ken to approve the, amending the uh, purchasing policy. Um, as, um, as written by Justin.
Oh, in, in a, in a better font.
All of us in favor? Thank you. And next, to warrant number six.
Almighty Waste, five thousand dollars, that's the last payment to the demo contractor. Andrew Scoggan Bank, eleven thousand one twenty-five, that's the loan payment for the Wilson Pond Culver project. Four thousand one hundred and thirty-five, these are, these are basically a month and a half worth of miscellaneous expenses on the, on the credit card, IT support. Um, I think the chief had a couple of items in here, what happened was last month, part of the bill got cut off. So they only paid the ones that they saw the expenditures for, so there's a little more on there. Bernstein Shore, our attorney, one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Barry Talbott and Royer, this is the accounting firm, six thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four. Butterfield Heating, this is the fire station furnaces, Chief mentioned earlier, six thousand three hundred and ninety-four. The Board Lumber Company, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight, that's the Whittier Woods expenses that you approved at the last meeting. C H Stevenson, Inc., this is the, this is the final payment um, to the vendor who did the Wilson Pond Culver. It's been a year and the warranty period is over, so we released the retainage. Commercial Divers, five thousand three hundred and forty-four, these are the people that did the inspection of the dam. Dennis K Burke, Gas and Oil, two thousand five hundred and seventy-three. Hereago Wireless, um, fifteen hundred, this is some of the outfitting of the police cruiser. Uh, Eco Main tipping fees, two thousand two hundred and sixty-five. Baby and Oil, uh, Heating Oil, one thousand thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Fleet Truck Registration Services, this is uh, repairs on, on some trailers, four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Criminal Industries, demo removal, ten thousand four hundred and seventy. Hillview Mini Barns, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-two, that's the shed for the Rec Department. H P Fairfield, uh, this is a, they're, they're a truck repair facility, two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. I see Communications, is that, is that you, Chief? I see, uh, one thousand four hundred and ten, I, I'm not sure exactly about that.
That was uh, installation of radios.
Okay, thank you. Main Equalization Consultants, this is the Assessor, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Main Technology Group, this is us replacing some computers and switches and the continuing of us bringing our IT infrastructure in line. Five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Key Screen Printing, t-shirts for the kids playing rec sports, one thousand three hundred and twenty-six. RSU Number Two, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, sixty dollars and forty-six cents. State of Maine Motor Vehicles, thirteen thousand seven oh six. County Winter for Ambulance Services, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty. United Construction and Forestry Vehicle Repairs, five thousand dollars. U S Bank Corporate Trust, Boston, this is the bond payment for the Packer Gilman Road, a one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Read the name of this company, but they're the ones that supplies the uh, the uh, the blades for the public works plows, four thousand four hundred dollars. And Workplace, oh, that's it. I highlighted the total at the bottom, there isn't a seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so that's it.
Where did that shed end up, for the Rec Department end up going? Where is that place?
It's right out.
Oh, is here, okay.
I thought he was, he, he said he was going to reach out and ask if he could put it down at the schools, and I don't, I don't know if they wouldn't let him or if he just never got around to it.
Have it on their property, they don't, do us many favors. I know, yesterday's front page.
A new day.
Yeah, a new day.
I hope so.
You, you sent this to us, and I didn't know.
I did.
Something to do with the, with the Wagon Bridge.
Oh, yeah, I think it's the same thing, they're just to start asking if there's any historic.
Yeah, if there's any historic things around there that, that they need to be aware of so they don't destroy.
None that I'm aware of.
I don't think there's anything.
I just sent that stuff to you, because you guys might have a better feeling for, you know, if you've been here.
He knows about Native Americans and stuff. There, yeah, none there.
There's somewhere.
There's what, there's what?
An old stone, you know, little weird fridge in there, but.
They, they pulled the septic truck out.
Yeah.
So that's not there.
I make a motion, we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-three warrant number six.
Second.
So the motion by Chris, second by Ken to prove the warrant number six for twenty twenty-three, all is a favor.
I make a motion, will you, Jared?
No, that's today, my name, because I read KJ online, I looked at that front page, and I went, oh my god.